We're all here?
Yeah.
That clock is actually a little slow. Seven o'clock, I'd like to call the -- this is loud. I'd like to call the meeting of the Village of Bartlett Planning and Zoning Commission to order, Counties of Cook, DuPage, and Kane, please call the roll.
Bob Picaro.
Here.
Charlie DeVoe.
Here.
Mark Hopkins. Julie Kapitakakis.
Here.
George Cozial.
Here.
John Miaso.
Here.
Michelle Sarwas.
Here.
Mike Weirden.
Here.
You have before you the minutes from the November 3 meeting, chair will entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second. By Bob, seconded by John, any discussion? Please call the roll.
Charlie DeVoe.
Yes.
Julie Kapitakakis.
Yes.
George Cozial.
Yes.
John Miaso.
Yes.
Michelle Sarwas.
Upstein.
Bob Picaro.
Yes.
Mike Weirden.
Yes. We have the public forum, is there anything that anybody has to address to this board? I would like to mention that Kristi is now formal and approved, and she's our boss. Congratulations on your promotion.
Thank you.
Oh, deserved.
At the Tuesday night board meeting. Okay, first item on the agenda is case number 2212, Southwest Business Park, Lot 3. Are the petitioners present?
Yes, ma'am.
Please come up to the microphone. Raise your right hand, do you soundly affirm that the evidence you're about to give is only the whole truth?
I do.
And do we have with us the picture of the sign?
This is not a public hearing.
This is not a --
You do not have to do one of them.
Okay, all right, go ahead and present your case, state your name for the record.
Dean Kelly, address is 612 South Fifth Street, St. Charles, Illinois. This is a preliminary plat of subdivision, re-subdivision of the property at West Bartlett and Route 25, you're probably familiar with that, our office building is just south of this. The reason for the re-subdivision is the next item on the agenda, which is a self-storage facility, so if that's approved, then we want to do the plat, if it's not, then we don't. So hopefully it's approved. So it's pretty self-explanatory, we are doing it for the purpose of that project. I'll entertain any questions.
Looked like pretty positive recommendations from staff also on this, it's gone through several different things over the years.
Correct, so these lots per their annexation agreement are, allow industrial, light industrial, and commercial uses.
Okay. Have you heard anything from anybody about this?
No.
Okay. Any questions from anyone on the board?
Just a comment, this is a area that seems logical for something like this, and since there aren't any neighbors to complain, I think that's a good thing, so I'm positive on this.
I would agree with George, especially since it still is a lot of open space out there, it's good to get in now before others get in and say, oh, wait, you know, might as well set the trend.
Are you focusing for Lot 2, are you focusing on any, any retail or any type of business?
I can't quite see which one is Lot 1 or 2, is the interior one to the right?
Yes.
Yeah, so I've had a daycare user interested in part of it, he bought another daycare operation recently, so he pulled back a little bit, but there was an interest there. I've had another interested party that wants to do kind of a mixed use. I think it's going to be difficult to get retail because it's an interior lot, so you don't have the exposure that you would to West Bartlett or Route 25. It could end up being a light industrial, you know, kind of more office warehouse type thing, certainly a passive use, I would love to get retail there, I just, I don't think the market will support it.
Probably not at this time.
Yeah, right, yeah, and obviously there's quite a bit of residential development that's taking place over on the other side of the road in South Elgin, so that'll certainly help these businesses, and of course Blue Heron is being built out quite rapidly as well.
Right. Any other questions or discussions or motions?
I'll make a motion to pass on a positive recommendation to the village board for case number 22-12, Southwind Business Park, Lot 3 subdivision.
Second.
Second.
Can you make that subject to the conditions in the staff report?
Okay, I'll amend that to the conditions in the staff report.
Okay, it's been moved by Bob, seconded by George, recommend approval based on the recommendations of the, subject to the recommendations of the staff report, any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Charlie DeVoe.
Yes.
Julie Kapitakakis.
Yes.
George Cozial.
Yes.
John Miaso.
Yes.
Michelle Sarwas.
Yes.
Bob Picaro.
Yes.
Mike Weirden.
Yes. Okay, we shall pass on a positive recommendation to the board for that.
Thank you.
Next item, case number 22-11, Southwind Self-Storage. Same petitioners? Okay, please come forward to the microphone.
And I'm happy to answer any questions regarding that as well, but --
Okay, both of you, both of you raise your right hand, do you soundly affirm the evidence you're about to give is only the whole truth?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, for your, for the record, please state your name.
My name is Jeff Budgill from Architect Studio at 257 Northwest Avenue in Elmhurst, I'm the architect for the project.
Go ahead and present your case.
The developer, Jim Lapatina, was unable to be here due to a mess-up on our part, this was postponed to this, to this meeting, and he had a pre-arranged trip that could not be modified, so he apologizes for not being here.
Okay.
This is the site plan for the project, you can see over to the, to the left here is Route 25, Benchmark is up at the top, we enter off of Benchmark into the site, there's a ring road that goes all the way around the site that provides fire access as well as access to exterior units that are at the grade level around the building. Parking is right at the top here with access here, there's an indoor loading and unloading area for the building, so they pull in, load, unload, and then they can pull out and park their car and, you know, load things into their unit. It's laid out as a two-story building, and we're here tonight asking for site plan approval and approval for two variations, one to increase the FAR to .84, and the other to reduce the required perimeter landscaping to allow the exterior access doors at grade. You can see here on this plan, the green areas are all landscaped areas, I do have a landscaping plan to show, but you can see here the areas that are landscaped for the project. A little bit about climate-controlled self-storage, it's actually a very benign use, a busy day might have eight to 10 customer trips to the facility, it's really, there's very low traffic, they're well-maintained, they're well-lit and secure, they have normal, regular business hours from, I think it's from eight in the morning, seven or eight in the morning till six or seven in the evening, interior access is not allowed after that. In an emergency with pre-arranged, you know, by getting ahold of somebody and making arrangements for somebody to meet you there, you can get in, not regularly, but they will allow access for something like that, it's key card access, key card doesn't work after the hours of business, one employee on-site while it's open managing it, again, there's, in the office, there's a whole series of screens with cameras all around the building showing what's going on around the building, so it's really, I can't stress enough how benign it is, it's perfect for a site like this with the residential across the way. So, we have here next, this is the first floor plan, you can see the, at the top here is the load-in, load-out area, they come in, they can unload, the elevators are right here, or they can access into the units, the different colors here just represent different size units, you know, we have the multiple stairwells, the buildings are completely sprinkled, there's fire alarms, they're very modern in that sense, and then of course there's enough exits that meet the required code. Then we have the second floor plan, same thing here, there's no, this is just the height of that drive-in, drive-out area requires that there's a carve-out at the second floor as well, and then you have different size units, smaller on the second floor, people don't like to carry things, there's carts that they can put them on, but they prefer not to carry big things or fill, you know, the bigger units, they're on the first floor. Here, oop, went too far, these are the exterior elevations, you can see that there's, and I have some renderings to show you as well, there's glass at the corners that are accented and a little higher, the glass is lit, but there's, and there's faux, they're not real, but you see, you know, the overhead doors behind there indicating that it's a self-storage unit, it's very common for these facilities to do that, and then you have across the bottom and the first floor, there are eight-foot-high doors, small doors for access to the exterior units, this is the front, there'd be a sign up here, and then you have the office here, and then the two overhead doors that open up to allow you in. The exterior are Kingspan insulated metal panels, they are very efficient, and they're selected not because they're cheap, they're not cheap, they're very expensive, but one of the things in today's market is they're available, tilt-up or pre-cast panels are just not available in any kind of a timeframe, so this is what they're using, and they're very decorative, they're used on high-profile projects in urban areas because they can be so good-looking. The building here shown, the height varies a little bit, it's higher at the top, I'm sorry, at the corners where there is accent colors, so it varies in height, I think it's from 29 to 32 feet. And next is a landscaping plan, you can see here that the entire site, the areas around the perimeter that we do have landscaped, and there's quite a bit of them are in the corners specifically, they're landscaped nicely, but the majority of the landscaping was put around the perimeter of the site, this is 25 over here to the, to the left, it's very highly, you'll see in the rendering, it's highly landscaped, lot of evergreen-type landscaping that keeps its foliage year-round, so it doesn't go bald in the, in the winter, there's quite a bit of, there's deciduous trees over here along Benchmark, and then even, even between this project and what would be, whatever be next, there's landscaping there, and again, also to the site. So a lot of time was spent, this landscaping, I believe, has been reviewed as approved, meeting the code to this point. And then we have a couple of, went a little fast, this is a rendering from, the eye-view rendering from the southwest, looking at the building as you'd be going north on 25, you can see the landscaping coming along, you do see the glass that's there, you can barely see these doors that are at grade, there's really a berm that comes in here and it drops down. The next rendering is a bird's-eye rendering that's, you know, from pretty high up to give a better view, this is off of the corner of Benchmark in 25, you can see the landscaping along Benchmark, and you can see there's landscaping in the berm along, along 25 as well. The last, okay, so this is from, this is from the, it's a southwest view from the intersection as well, but at eye level, showing the building and the landscaping that's available on there. We, in discussing with staff, the findings of fact are in the application and are already considered a part of the agreement, so I'm not going to read them all in, but I would be happy to take any questions that you have on the project.
I was impressed at looking through there when you were talking about the landscaping, about having more of the evergreen-type things instead of deciduous, where they would all lose their leaves and be kind of barren in the, in the wintertime, I think.
Well, yeah, the deciduous trees all lose, typically lose their leaves, the evergreens stay green all year round.
Right, and you --
Those were grouped along, oop, I apologize, I really blew that. They're, they are, they're grouped along 25 to buffer for the residential, and they can, they can see the upper part of the building, which is what is important to the, to the developer. It's very common, very common, for these facilities to be built on the edge of a district that allows them, or where we can get permitted to construct, but there's very common to have residential across the way on them, this is where all of these facilities want to be, that's where the, the large operators, this I believe is going to be extra space, it's a national operator, very professionally done, there's leases with each, each unit that does not allow for any flammables, it's, they're very strict about that, it's strictly just, you know, household or maybe, you know, storage for papers, that type of thing.
I think it's an ideal thing because you're not going to have a lot of noise problems or traffic problems that would irritate nearby neighbors.
Correct, that's correct. I would add, just as an aside, regarding the FAR, and Kristi, please correct me if I misspeak here, there are many allowed industrial, light industrial, and commercial uses that could come in here, do this building as a one-story building, yet they could be making smelly widgets, and you could have 40 employees in there with trucks delivering things every day, coming and going. In this case, there is a second story, so that requires the increase in the FAR, but it's, again, I can't stress how benign the use is, you can drive by here and you'll rarely see people in there, you'll see one car out front with the employee, it's, it's a perfect use for this type of a site, in our opinion.
Do we have any heads-up from IDOT about plans to widen the intersection or the entire roadway?
IDOT does not have plans to widen it, they are looking at resurfacing it, possibly in the 2023, 2024 budget, but there's no plans to do intersection improvements at this time.
No plans to take it right-of-way or anything at this time?
I have a question about that, but IDOT, that picture, well, that was up there, the one that's southbound on 25, you turn on to Benchmark there?
Want to see that rendering?
Yeah, that one right, there, no.
Go back.
There you are.
That one.
Right there, that one. I, when I was out there observing, that corner is in miserable condition, so I'm hoping that IDOT or the village or somebody works with the petitioner to create a safer turn-off. I mean, you can see where people have gone over the curb, it's just, it's a real mess.
Is it the intersection, is it the Benchmark right-of-way, or is it the Route 25?
It's right there at the corner of Benchmark, that, where it's going to be facing.
Yes, Benchmark's the east-west.
If you're southbound on 25, you have to turn on Southwind.
If you're southbound on 25, and you make the turn onto Benchmark, right there, it's, it's a mess, it's, that's just the best way to describe it, there's --
Is it only right-in, right-out?
It's like where the trucks come in.
I don't think you can make, you can't be going southbound and make a left-hand turn in.
No, no, you're making, you're making a right-hand turn. You're making, you're going north on 25 and you make a right --
Oh, you're turning out, okay.
I'm sorry, you're going north, I misspoke.
Okay, okay.
You're going north, misspoke, sorry, and then, yeah, so that, that corner will be, need attention, I guess that's all my comment, and my next comment would be, what is an FAR?
FAR is the floor area ratio, so it's the ratio of how much square footage there is of the building in comparison to the square footage of the land.
Okay.
So if this were, say, a typical warehouse with one story, its FAR would be half of what it is now, but because this has the second floor in it, the floor area is higher.
Okay, thank you.
Just a clarification on that intersection, that is right-in and right-out, is that correct?
Or northbound.
Yeah, yeah, if you're northbound, unlike what Charlie said.
Okay. I just have a comment on the internal, interior drive, the circular drive, I was pleased to see that that's one-way, looking at the dimensions of the lot, and as noted in, in the information, having two-way traffic would potentially pose some problems, I think would be too tight.
It could, and that's one of the reasons why we went to one-way, but again, the, the traffic load here is so incredibly low that, you know, I can't even imagine a situation where you'd have more than two cars, three cars, you know, circulating around there, it's not like there's going to be a traffic jam, but we do accommodate that with the one, one-way traffic.
There's not parking allowed in the fire lane, correct?
No, but there is room for cars to park up at the building.
Right, right adjacent to the building, this link.
So we actually worked with the petitioner, they originally wanted it to be two-way, we had them add the islands at the corner of the building to provide a protected bump-out for the vehicles that are loading and unloading, so that they're not obstructing the access ring road.
Okay.
So that rendering which shows two-way traffic, there is a rendering that shows the front of the building?
I think that's, that's just a, the rendering, the --
That's just prior to --
That was from their original submittal?
Yeah, yeah.
We had them change that on the actual --
It is one-way, there's, petitioner has, has agreed to that, yes.
Good. It appears to be a well-thought-out plan, I like the looks of the building, the landscaping should be attractive as it grows, and you're absolutely correct, this is going to be a very quiet neighbor in the area, so it's a good use.
Thank you.
Okay, we need to mention the picture of the sign, the mailings in the newspaper, mark those exhibits A, B, and C. Anything else before we open it up to the public? Okay, does anyone in the public have anything to say? The audience?
Carrie Flood.
If you could go up to the microphone so we can get you in the record, thank you.
Hi, I'm Carrie Flood, and I arrived a little bit late, so I'm sorry if you already covered some, some of my questions, I live actually right across the street in the new development of Lennar, and --
South Elgin?
South Elgin. So I was really surprised, I moved from St. Charles, I was very surprised, living there now for about a year, at how, how much traffic is on Route 25, specifically right along this area, there's been a number of accidents and things like that, so I'm a little concerned about just more people coming down that way for storage units, but more importantly, I thought I read somewhere that they were trying not to do so much vegetation or trees, and I would hope, because I look right out on 25 to where this is going to be, so I'm hoping they can kind of hide it a little bit with a lot of pine trees or that kind of, like, a lot, because the building to the right, the, the building, I don't know what, who it is, but they have so much vegetation, so I'm just hoping that that's really how it comes through with a ton of pine trees to kind of block it, and I don't know how much, what your lighting is going to be, I'm just hoping it's not outward-facing, because then it would be right into all of our bedrooms, and just kind of curious about the consideration for the neighbors across the street that recently just purchased a property in that neighborhood across the street, so.
Go ahead.
Yes. So your second comment first, regarding the lighting, we've submitted a photo, photometrics plan which meets the city's requirements for lighting, and all the lighting is directed down, it is not directed up. Regarding the landscaping, your first question, again, I would say, you know, we've bunched the, the evergreen type, which stays green year-round, along 25 to block it, there's a variety of heights going in there, and the rendering, I have to say, it's the first time I've been asked to go back to the renderer and make sure that the, the rendering depicts extremely closely what the actual plan says, and, and we did, so this, this is very accurate to what, what you could expect, and landscaping grows, it's bigger with time, even bigger.
I will say that their landscaping along the west property line exceeds what our zoning ordinance requires, so the petitioner was very accommodating with that.
It was a specific species that kind of grows together as a hedge, in essence?
Yes, I'm not the landscape architect, but yes, they do, they grow in and create more of a, of a wall.
Similar to our office building.
Yeah, they're using sea-green junipers, which are often used in hedges.
Very good, thank you for thinking about that. Anyone else? Any other comments from the public or anything on, by phone or email?
We've not received any phone calls on this, or anyone at the counter regarding any, anything with this project.
Any other comments or motions?
I would make a motion to pass along a positive recommendation to the village board for item 22-11, Southwind Self-Storage.
Subject to the staff recommendations?
Conditions and findings of fact in the staff report.
And the findings, or based upon the findings of fact.
Second.
Okay, at this point, we have a motion on the floor, I shall close the public hearing, seconded by Bob, any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Charlie DeVoe.
Yes.
Julie Kapitakakis.
Yes.
George Cozial.
Yes.
John Miaso.
Yes.
Michelle Sarwas.
Yes.
Bob Picaro.
Yes.
Mike Weirden.
Yes. Okay, we shall pass on a positive recommendation to the board, any idea how soon that, it should be on fast, right?
It's going to committee on the 20th, and then should get final approval the first Tuesday in January.
Okay, sounds, sounds pretty fast.
I'd have to have my ordinance done tomorrow.
Thank you very much.
Okay, next item on the agenda, case number 2215, political signs, text amendment, public hearing.
It's a public hearing, so for this one, we just have proof of the publication.
Okay, proof of the publication, mark that Exhibit 8. Guessing Kurt is going to talk, or Kristi, or?
Yes.
Raise, raise your right hand, do you soundly affirm the evidence you're about to give is only the whole truth?
I do.
Please state your name for the record.
Kurt Asfruth, I'm a partner with Ansel Glink.
Okay, go ahead.
Good evening, thanks for having me, as some of you may know, I do some work for the village on a special counsel basis, and I work with Brian Maraz pretty regularly. He asked me to help out looking into the village's political sign regulations, there's a provision in the municipal code that basically preempts all municipalities, home rule or non-home rule, from regulating political signage on residential property. We basically cannot prevent anybody from putting up a political sign in their front yard in any way, the only power that any municipality in the state of Illinois has is to enforce reasonable size restrictions. So we looked at the village code currently, the zoning ordinance, and there are some carve-outs for political signs, but there are still some of those impermissible restrictions on political signs, including a limitation on the number of signs, and a limitation on the time period for how long those signs can be up. Unfortunately, we, we did look at the legislative history when this law was passed back in 2011 to kind of clarify exactly what the legislature was intending when they basically tied our hands with this law, and they made it really clear that basically any amount of signs are going to be permissible, we can't prevent them from having 25 signs in their front yard. Although not directly expressed, we think the goal there is that there might be 20 races on the ballot, there might be 10 additional referendum questions on the ballot, and they want a residential property owner to be able to have a sign for each and every one of those races if they choose to do so. They also limited our ability to say how long those signs can be up, I know it's a concern, a lot of people leave political signs up for long time periods after an election, the signs become essentially outdated, the state has tied our hands there as well, there's not really anything we can do to say you have to take those signs down after, a certain point after an election, that was a pretty common provision in most zoning codes across the state, you could only have the sign up for, you know, 30 days after the election, then it had to come down, we can't enforce a restriction like that any longer. So we looked at the code and came up with a draft text amendment to enforce the one thing that we can regulate, is that -- thing that we can regulate, and that's the size of political signs. I do want to stress that this is only residential property. This doesn't apply to any commercial property, industrial property, this is only on residential property. So this isn't going to apply, you know, to a McDonald's or to a self-storage facility, something like that, they're still going to be subject to our standard temporary sign regulations. So we drafted up a text amendment here, it's in your packet, I believe. This was also reviewed by the village board at their committee of the whole meeting. As you'll see, we carve out political signs as essentially a unique exempt category of signs. We do have a size restriction, after discussing with the village board, they wanted to limit it to 16 square feet, so that means an individual sign can be 16 square feet. One thing that comes up a lot, and we see this commonly, is that a municipality will try and say that there is a aggregate limitation, that you can only have up to 40 square feet total in signs. Unfortunately, that's a indirect limitation on the number of signs that you can put up that we don't think is legally permissible under this law. So this is an individual limitation, 16 feet per sign. We've also included a height limitation to ensure that somebody doesn't put essentially a billboard up in their front yard advocating for a campaign here, and that height limitation's at six feet. And we also make it very clear that these signs have to be on that residential property, they can't be placed in the right-of-way, they can't be placed, you know, in other areas that are trying to gather attention outside of somebody's, essentially their residential front yard there. Happy to discuss any questions, it's, it's a situation where our hands are tied in a lot of ways, we just don't have a lot of discretion, and we want to make sure that the village, the zoning ordinance is clear how these signs are treated. It's not only better for staff and enforcement purposes, but better for residents to know what they can and can't do when election season comes along.
I was very impressed with your presentation at the board the other night, and I-
Thank you.
-wholeheartedly agree, since I got cited one time for too many signs in the yard. I thought she was kidding at first. And I remember when we were redrafting the ordinance, when this came up, I even had said to Roberta at the time, I said, "Well, what about political signs, shouldn't that be an exemption?" She said, "Well, if we don't include them, you could have as many as you want out there." I said, "And?" So we've kind of come full circle to that.
And that's exactly the intent of the legislature here, was they wanted to ensure you could have as many signs as you want, and in the memo, we actually quote some of the back-and-forth with the legislators there, that they were very clear that you can't limit the number of signs in that yard, and it's somebody's yard.
And some of that is on the heels of Supreme Court decisions, too.
It is, it is. There was, the law regarding our limitations regulating signage continues to change, but this was in response to a Supreme Court decision from 2010, I believe. How we regulate signs based on their content is something that the law is changing daily almost. I mentioned in the memo that there's been two large, or two very important Supreme Court decisions over the past few years governing content-based regulations of signs. So basically, you have to read the sign to see if it's permitted, there's some questions about whether or not we can or can't do that. It softened a little bit, but everybody is reviewing their sign codes to make sure that as much as possible, you're regulating the physical attributes of that sign, the, you know, the place, the, it's construction, it's how big it is, you know, what type of lighting it might have. That we can regulate, very clearly we can regulate. It's, you know, well, you can have a sign advertising the local VFW Fish Fry here, but you can't have a sign saying that you're advertising your garage sale. You know, distinguishing between that, when the sign is the same, based on its content, that's where our hands start to get tied a little bit there. This is an issue where it's clearly a content-based restriction, based on, it's a political sign. This, you know, any other sign on residential property is not subject to these restrictions, but this is something that the state has mandated, so if somebody wants to challenge whether or not that's a content-based restriction, they have to challenge the state of Illinois because they're the ones that force this upon us.
Very good.
Have we had any residents, like, where we've tried to challenge them on something that, like, pushback, like, they knew this law, saying that we were not in compliance?
No.
No, not that it makes a difference now, but.
Am I correct in understanding that on residential property, after the election, we will no longer be able to enforce the removal of signs? They could stay there forever?
Correct.
Ooh, that concerns me a little bit, but I guess that's the way of the future. And what happens in non-residential areas, do we have the right to enforce the removal, the pickup of signs?
Yes, this only pertains to residential properties.
Thank you.
Regarding the size, the 16 square feet or the six-feet height, now you indicated the village board came up with those numbers. I guess, my question is, how were those numbers arrived at, and is it consistent with what political sign sizes normally are, and what other villages may allow, since it's the one item that can be regulated?
Certainly. We've done a pretty broad survey of what other communities allow for political signs. It kind of runs the gamut, you know, some limit them to six square feet, and that's kind of your standard yard sign that you would think of. Some allow very, very large signs. I think Hoffman Estates allows up to 32 square feet for a single political sign, so that's, it's pretty large. So I think, you know, we've got, at 16 square feet, we're kind of in that middle range of where communities allow political signs. Standard temporary signs on a residential lot would be limited to six square feet, but you can have up to 24 square feet on your property in the aggregate. So we're not, we're allowing it a little bit larger than what a standard temporary sign would be allowed on a residential lot, but we're still capping it more than, smaller than what the aggregate amount of signage would be permitted on a residential lot for non-political signs, if that makes sense.
Anyone else?
Yes, so Christie, has there been a check of, I want to say this, I see a couple of things I don't understand.
For what?
Section 3 severability, it's basically a clerical thing.
Oh, I, I'm happy to address that if you'd like. In the ordinance that you referred to there?
Yeah, all parts are severable.
Yes.
The individual pars, is that supposed to be parts? Line 3, section 3.
Any, or part of this ordinance, so it's just, that's unfortunately a legal provision that we include in all ordinances, so that if one portion of this ordinance is found to be invalid by a court-
Right.
-it doesn't infect the rest of the provisions.
Okay, but is it, is it, is the word pars or parts?
Sorry, yeah, maybe there's a typo there, I have it as pardon.
The second.
Oh, third line.
Third line.
Parts, yeah, sorry, that should be parts.
Okay.
Apologies, yeah.
And then, question on section 4.
Oh, I apologize, there's another typo there, yeah.
The Village of Gilbert.
That's, that's on me, that's another typo there, my apologies.
Having fun.
No further questions, Your Honor.
So our recommendation is subject to corrections, right? Any motions?
So moved to approve.
With the two corrections?
With the corrections. And findings of staff, yes.
By John, seconded by Michelle. Any further discussion? Again, thank you for the work you did on it and the research.
Happy to be here, thanks for having me.
Please call a roll.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Christie, we didn't need to open up the public, because-
Oh, yeah, you do need to open the public hearing, I thought you had done that already, you can open.
Because of that. Open the public hearing, there's nobody here, close the public hearing, there's a motion on the floor. Go ahead and call the roll.
Charlie DeVoe.
Approved.
Julie Kapitakakis.
Approved.
George Cozio.
Approved.
Don Miaso.
Approve.
Michelle Sarwas.
Approve.
Bob Picaro.
Approve.
Mike Wearden.
Oh, yes, approved. Okay, any, anything else coming up, old business, new business?
I don't believe we're going to have a meeting in January, so.
Okay.
And then tomorrow's the holiday party, so I hope you're there.
I'm not going to be there. I'm going to Fergie Jenkins' birthday party this weekend.
Oh, okay, any motions to adjourn?
So moved.
Moved by George, seconded by Michelle, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay.